Welcome to the County Office of Education Board Trustees Meeting. And is the correct place on the agenda? So if you would be so good, Veronese, to do a roll call, please?
Trustee Acosta? Trustee Alto? Trustee Estrada?
Here.
Trustee Nichols? Trustee Sanchez?
Here.
Trustee Van Allen? President Roth?
Here.
Student trustee Alvarez Delgado?
Here.
Thank you. And next, we will, we have a forum and Alyssa will be joining us in a bit. Dr. Spock, you would lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
Oh, wait a minute. I skipped over, we as board members can remote attend, but we do not have any requests for that.
That's correct.
Okay, so head to the
Stand if you can, please face the flag, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So moving to item three, which is approval of the agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second.
You want it?
Sure.
Madam President, if you would, before approval, I would like to note that item 8.1 will need to be tabled.
Eight point? Okay.
Thank you.
Does that mean forever?
Possibly, yes. Possibly it will not need to return to us.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second on the approval of the agenda. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Oscar, I needed to ask you first.
Aye.
Thank you. The rest, if you would, again, aye?
Aye.
If there's any opposed, okay, motion passes. Public comment? Do we have any requests for that?
There's no request for a public comment. President Roth?
I'm not going to read this about public comment, but if somebody does want to speak up, I'll read the paragraph. So on the consent agenda, under item five, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Okay, Bruce? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Oscar? Your decision on this consent agenda?
Yes.
Good answer. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
The motion passes. Correspondence, item six, have we received any correspondence prior or after the publication of this?
There have been no additional correspondence besides the letter that was in your packet from the state treasurer.
Under item seven, we'll start with labor negotiations, 7.1, where we're sunshining Santa Cruz County Education Association, SCCEA, chapter 36, proposing changes to Article Six within the 2425 Certified Employee Unit Agreement to the Santa Cruz County Superintendent of Schools. Do you want to say anything, or should I just ask for presenters?
Yes, I'm going to introduce the president of our teachers' association, Elizabeth Burnham Grau, and longtime educator with the Alternative Education Program and does an outstanding job representing the interests of our teachers on behalf of our students. And so, welcome Elizabeth, and the floor is yours.
Hey, thank you for your kind words. Good afternoon, my name, as stated, is Elizabeth Burnham Grau, and it's my pleasure to be the acting president of our local CTA unit for the Santa Cruz County Office of Education. I wanted to start by expressing our gratitude to the board, to our administrators, and to Dr. Sabah for your continued support to our educators, to our students, and to our communities. It's truly an honor to work for this organization. The SCCEA, chapter 236, chooses at this time to exercise its rights, as expressed by law, to sunshine the following contract articles for a revised Certified Employee Successor Agreement for July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2027 cycle. Article two is term. We propose a new term for the successor agreement that would run from July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2027. We'll be creating a committee, as well as surveying our members, to update and streamline proposed new contract language. Article six, compensation, will propose a competitive compensation package that will allow us to attract and retain certified bargaining unit members. We've also recently formed an evaluation document and process committee of our members that will work alongside HR to update our evaluation document and process. And I'm happy to answer any questions that any of you have at this point, and just want to say thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Any questions, Oscar?
Well, thank you, and I hope that all goes well.
Thank you so much, Elizabeth.
Okay. Now, we will move to item 7.2, which, again, labor negotiations, sunshining with the Santa Cruz County Association, SCCEA. And do you want to introduce Leanne?
Yes, thank you. And so, I'm going to ask our deputy superintendent, Leon Reyes, to talk to us about this item.
Thank you. So in conjunction with the RADA Act, which requires all parties to, that are negotiating a collective bargaining agreement, to give public notice of their proposals at a public meeting. As Ms. Burnham Grau stated, she has mentioned, and let you all know, the chapters they're wishing to discuss in conjunction with their collective bargaining agreement. And in turn, the County Office of Education can then also open up particular chapters, or articles, rather, that they wish to discuss as well. So the following articles that we are bringing forward as the Santa Cruz County Office of Ed are also Article Two term. For the three-year term has expired on the current agreement as of June 30th, so we will be also negotiating the term of the new contract through June of 2027. Also, opening up Article Six, compensation. And we will propose to negotiate possible revisions to the language relating to compensation in order to promote competitive salaries and benefits, but to also balance this effort with maintaining fiscal solvency. We propose to negotiate possible language revisions in Article 10, which is leaves. And this will be in order to bring us into current law, to incorporate that in the collective bargaining agreement as well. Further, Article 14, which is the retirement program, the proposal is to negotiate possible revisions related to the retirement program in order to provide clarifying language. And then, finally, Appendix D, we propose to negotiate possible revisions to the language related to Appendix D in order, again, to provide clarifying language. So if the following articles are agreed upon, then they would be voted on and ratified by the SCCEA and then approved by the County Office of Ed.
Any questions? Thank you, Leanne, and I wish it all to be a good session or sessions. So moving on to item 7.3, which is the 2022-2023 Fiscal Year Annual Audit Report. And Dr. Sabah, you wish to introduce?
Yes, this is an important part of our responsibility to ensure the accurate and effective systems for our fiscal stability and solvency is this annual audit report. And so, we get to work with folks from AID Bailey, and they're going to be providing a report today. I'm going to ask Leanne to introduce them.
Thank you, yes, it's my pleasure joining us via Zoom. I see her name down there at the bottom, Ms. Samantha Moore. I have worked with Ms. Moore for many years, including here at the COA, as well as my former district. She's an amazing audit partner to us. Our team really enjoys working with her, and I think the feeling is mutual. We have a great relationship with them. And so, she's going to be going through some of the key points of our audit for us this evening. Hi Samantha, and welcome.
Hey, Leanne, thank you for having me today. And before I get started, I would just like to say, again, thank you for having me this afternoon, and I wanted to wish all of you a Happy New Year, and I hope everything has started out well for you this year as we move into 2324, which I guess for you guys is half over by now. So I'm going to go through, just hitting on the highlights of the report. So if, as I go through, if you have any questions, or at the end, if I don't go over something that you would like me to go over, please don't hesitate to stop me or to wait, like I said, till the end, and you can ask me at that time. Veronese, do I need to have you advance the slides?
Yes.
Okay, you can move on to the next, please. Okay, this is just a slide to kind of show you a little bit of how we've changed since we have become AID Bailey, just to let you see some of the services that we've offered and how it has expanded with the, like I said, with the merger, and just to kind of let you know what we have going on in our office. As you can see, you'll see that we have over 40 offices, and one of them is in India. So Leanne and Melissa and their staff may be getting contacted by somebody from India requesting information because we do occasionally have one of their staff that is assigned to our office, and they are currently, for 2324, working on testing your GASB 68, which relates to your STIRS and PERS pension retirement plans. Next, please? And then, to kind of go over the process for the audit, it's split into two phases, what we term interim. And final, interim is the first phase when we come out, usually in the springtime, and we'll hit on areas such as testing attendance, say juvenile court school, independent study, and we rotate sites from year to year, depending on what sites are available. If there's only one site for a specific area that we're required to test, of course, we will hit that site each year. And in addition to that, we will test your controls that are in place to ensure that should something be, should there be a potential problem, there is procedures in place that will potentially catch those errors or mistakes. And then, we also test state compliance, and that is what is put out by the state controller. Each year is a guide for us that tells us what we have to test. And then, we test also federal compliance, and that's your federal monies such as Title I, special education, for example. And for state compliance, we're testing such things, again, as attendance, P2, unduplicated pupil counts. And this would apply, certain areas will apply to both the charter and the county office, and then certain areas only apply strictly to the charter or to the county office, depending on what this audit guide tells us they want us to do. In the final phase, we're completing the state compliance and federal testing. Again, it's state compliance, areas that come up at the end of the year, such as GAN or EPA. And again, like EPA applies to both, if they receive it, the charter school and the county office. And then, we're testing the rest of our federal compliance because we're required to ensure that we test expenditures, payroll and non-payroll, plus other compliance areas and reporting for the full fiscal year. So we will review our populations and pull additional items as they are required. And then, of course, then we're putting together your financial statements and putting, testing areas such as your cash, accounts receivable, putting together your year-end numbers that go into your audit report. Next. Thank you. These are the components that just make up the audit report. Independent auditor's report is where we issue our opinion on your financial statements. And the opinion that was issued for your audit report was unmodified. And what that means, that in all material respects, we are stating that we feel that the financial position of the county office is correctly stated. Your management discussion and analysis is kind of your document. We prepare it in conjunction with you because we put together the condensed footnotes and financial statements, just to ensure that they balance to the audit report. But it also gives you the opportunity to speak to areas that are specific to the county, such as if you open new facilities, for example, or if you received a significant achievement during the year, for example. And then, last area in the management discussion analysis is the budget, the components that went into the development of the coming year's budget. So there's a section that refers to the 2324 budget. And then, we have, of course, your financial statements and your notes, such as your balance sheet, your statement of net position, and your notes, such as cash, there's cash footnotes, there's accounts receivable, accounts payable, several long-term obligation footnotes as well. As you can see, it starts on page, report page 16, PDF page 13, but goes for quite a bit because that also encompasses your net pension liability. So there are several notes that apply to that as well. Next is your required supplementary information, and that's your information such as the, excuse me, such as your schedule of expenditures of financial federal assistance, which is your SIFA. That's your federal financial funds, such as, again, your Title I monies that you've expended during the year. You're required to report those if you, and have a single audit if you receive a certain level or you spend a certain level of funds. And then, you have your supplementary information, which is information such as, it talks about, you'll document the board, for example, and the area that the county office encompasses, and how many schools that are serviced, for example. And then, lastly, we have your findings section at the end of the report. And as you will see, there were no findings reported for the financial statements, state compliance, or the federal compliance. And again, your state compliance is those programs that the state controller requires us to audit every year. And your federal compliance is related to your federal programs, such as Title I and the ESER programs, and those special education cluster. And the ESER programs were the ones that were selected this year for testing. So the opinions for those were unmodified as well. Next. Okay, this is just to let you know what new reporting requirement went into effect in 2223, and this relates to your subscription-based information technology arrangements, or as we call them, CIBDAs. As you can see, it's Zoom, such as this, Power Schools, ARI's attendance. It's your escape, your financial accounting system. But they're only required to be reported if they're longer than 12 months. So if they're shorter, if it renews every year, then that is not required to be reported in the entity-wide statements. And what that means, that if it's more than 12 months, it would be reported as a liability in your entity-wide statements, but it also would be reported as a right to use asset in your capital assets in your entity-wide statements. The county, however, this year didn't have any that were required to be disclosed in the audit report. There was one CIBDA that was longer than 12 months. But however, based on the amount that was paid for it, it was not material to the financial statements, so we were not required to disclose it for you. Next. Okay, these are your, like, again, your financial statements. We have your government-wide financial statements, and that is your, or your entity-wide, that is your statement of net position and your statement of activities. It takes all the individual information from your fund, your unaudited actuals by fund, and rolls them together and reports them. And then, the next one is your governmental fund financial statements, which you would be more familiar with. It reports your, what we term major funds, and that's your county school service fund. It's always a major fund because it's the primary operating fund of the county. And then, for you guys, this year, you also had, which it pretty consistently is, your special education pass-through fund. Fund 10 is usually a major fund as well. And then, they are aggregated together under non-major funds, all the other funds within the district. I mean, excuse me, within the county office. And then, you have your, again, your notes to your financial statements, which I had mentioned, such as your cash receipts, I mean, cash or accounts receivable, for example. Next. This is just a brief summary, summation of your statement in net position. Like, as you can see, it's your assets in deferred outflows, liabilities in deferred inflows. It just summarizes them so you can see what the net statement of net position was at the end of the year. And as you can see, the capital assets were about $33.9 million. It decreased about $1 million, and that's due to, it appears to be due to primarily just regular annual depreciation expense. And then, your long-term debt obligations are, were $49.8 million, which increased, as you can see, it looks pretty significant, $14.7 million. That's primarily due to your net pension liabilities. Depending on how those perform, they significantly can go up or down, so they change often year to year. Next. This one is your, again, your governmental fund financial statements, and it reports your, as I was saying, your major funds, it's your county school service fund and your special education pass-through fund. And then, the all others is your non-major funds. And as you can see, there's an asterisk under county school facilities because based on GASB 54, how they treat the funds in Fund 11, 14, and 17, these are required to be consolidated into the county school service fund. So that also is, the activity for those funds is included in the county school service fund. But again, this is only for your reporting. It would still, when the unaudited actuals come out, those will have their own unaudited actual still. Next. And this is, again, your required supplementary information. This is just a brief summary of the budgetary comparison schedule, and we're required to have budgetary comparisons for your county school service fund and any major special revenue funds. So there's also one for the special education pass-through fund. And this is just a summary comparing your final budget to your actual, and then showing the variance. But the report, the schedule in the report would actually also include the original budget. Next. And this one is, again, just, this is your special education pass-through fund. And again, it just summarizes your revenue as in other sources. Other sources would be inter-fund transfers in, and if other sources, which could be, if there was a new lease, for example, say you guys are leasing a new school, school space, schoolroom space. So then, that would be under other sources as well. Other expenditures and other uses are, other uses are inter-fund transfers out. And then, like I said, it just summarizes the increase or decrease, and then the ending fund balance, the change there. Next. This is your supplementary information. This is just a brief recap of the schedule of trends and analysis. And what this is, is a three-year look at what happens in the county school service fund. And then, there's also a disclosure for the 2324 budget. But again, that budget was at a point in time, so it would not reflect all budget revisions. So again, it's only as of the time that it was received, and we put it in the report. And again, it just shows you the increase of the fund balance for the last three years, the ending fund balance, your reserve percentage, and your, the minimum for the county office is 3%, but the board policy is a 5%. So you can see, you guys are meeting your 5% reserve. And then, this is just your average daily attendance as of the annual attendance report because the county office programs are funded on annual. And you can see, there's been just over 60 ADA decrease since 2021. But it's important to keep in mind that enrollment in the programs that the county operates, they do, you do not have control over the enrollment. So you're kind of only a passive participant in the enrollment. You do not dictate the enrollment, or you can't change the enrollment. Next, please? That was all I had for today. And are there any questions or anything you want me to clarify or go over that I didn't touch on, or something you want me to explain a little further based on what I talked about?
Sam, could you please, this is Leanne, I was just going to ask if you could please provide the board with a little more clarification on what an unmodified opinion is, so that they understand the meaning of that. I think that would be helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Unmodified is, I know, it doesn't, it sounds odd. It's the best opinion that we can issue because it's saying that the financial statement, the financials that you provided, the unaudited actuals, did not need any material audit adjustments, meaning that we didn't see, like, say, cash was understated or overstated. As you may be familiar with or have heard the term, there's a fair market value adjustment to cash in county, and that's an adjustment to get the cash in county at the fair market value. So that one is one that we often see, but again, the county, you guys post that. So that is, before we started having to require that it be posted, that was one, sometimes, that could be, end up being an audit adjustment because, say, for example, if you guys were building a new school site and you had issued COPS or bonds, you may have a high influx of cash due to the COPS proceeds. Then, it could make it a material adjustment. But since you guys are booking them, it's not an adjustment that we have seen or we need to be concerned about making. Or say, there's a liability that doesn't get recorded or something, some adjustment to the numbers that you guys have given us. We didn't have to change any of the numbers that were in the unaudited actuals, essentially is what an unmodified opinion means for your financial statements. And then, related to state compliance, there's no, like I said, of the programs that were required to test, such as your P2 and annual attendance reports. such as your P two and annual attendance reports, um, the EPA, the unduplicated pupil counts, your LCAP, the local um, control accountability plan, um, excuse me, I lost my train of thought there, um, because we always just call it LCAP. But if we find areas that are um, that you're not in compliance with the state compliance, then that could modify the opinion. But again, it would be, say that there was an issue with the unduplicated at the charter school, then it would be, your opinion would be unmodified except for the unduplicated um, pupil counts at the charter school. So we wouldn't say your opinion over all the state compliance is unmodified or qualified. Because if we go from, if there's an issue, it goes from unmodified to qualified. And then um, it only goes downhill from there, but you don't want to know about that. Um, so if it's, that would be what we would see for state compliance. And then for um, federal compliance, again, it could be, unmodified means that there are certain components that the um, that are required to be um, done by a county office or a district when um, spending like special education funds or those ESER funds that are related to COVID nineteen. As long as you are in compliance with those requirements, then your opinion would be unmodified. And again, that's saying that we don't find any material um, variances or exceptions because there are certain thresholds that um, if it was, say, an expenditure that was a couple thousand dollars that was unallowable, that doesn't reach the threshold that would require us to report it. But if it's a, a expenditure that's, you know, or it's a somebody's salary for the year, an entire year, so it's fifty thousand dollars, then that would have an impact on that particular program and affect the opinion that would be issued related to the federal programs. Does that help?
So trustees, I think you know this, but if you didn't get that, this is really good news.
Yes.
What our crew gives us every year, and I congratulate them and the whole team, um, and the superintendent, of course, for the overall picture. And um, it, this is good. This is what we want to hear. And I appreciate to the auditors and, and to our staff.
Yeah, most of the time, everybody wants, just wants to know if there's any findings or any audit adjustments.
Exactly.
That's usually what they, they want us to jump to the end and tell them the good news.
That's what I always look for first.
Exactly.
Yep. Yeah, exactly. That's you and ninety-five percent of everybody else. So no, it's, it just, again, just to reiterate, it just shows what a great job Leanne and her staff are doing. And they, I will say again, I, they're wonderful to work with. We always enjoy coming out there and seeing them, and it's a pleasure um, working with them, and I look forward to continue working with them in the future.
If I could add my thanks, thank you so much, Samantha, for, for uh, the report, but also the, the time and care that you've, you've taken and the diligence to uh, to help evaluate. And uh, you know, we see, we, we know that your roles as a critical friend, and when we see a report that shows no finding, it is like a straight A uh, on a test. And so we appreciate that. And, and I also like to add my congratulations to Leanne and the amazing team. We have many of our, our business services team here, uh, represented and, and they're, it's always great to, to uh, to see uh, their hard work reflected in, in this, this kind of report. So thank you, Samantha, and thank you to our team.
Thank you.
They get gold stars.
Gold stars are all around.
Give, give yourselves a hand, pat on the back. Job well done.
Again, thank you uh, for your work and for your incredible knowledge and for our team that is able to answer all of the questions or come up with uh, the forms that are necessary. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, moving right along. We are going to item seven point four, uh, local control accountability plan supplement for the Santa Cruz office, our county office of education. And uh, Ferris, do you?
Yes, I'd love to. Um, so a part of the requirements of the local control and accountability plan is for you to receive a mid-year update, uh, so that we're not waiting till the end of the year to hear how things are going, what kinds of, what aspects of uh, of our local control and accountability plan have been, are moving forward in a, in a successful way, and which ones we need to continue working on. And so we are fortunate to have uh, presentations from uh, two of our wonderful programs here. Dr. Jennifer Eisen Gonzalez, who is going to be presenting the LCAP update for our alternative education program.
Thank you, Dr. Sabah. All right, I like this one. It's always on this mic, so great. Um, uh, yes, um, if you would go ahead, Bedan, you say? We'll jump right in. Okay, so as promised last month, since we do have new board members and a student trustee, um, I, it's a little bit lengthier than it normally would be because I really wanted to go into some background that I haven't had the chance to do. But I will go quick. It's only going to be forty-five minutes, I promise. Just kidding. All right, so this, uh, every year they like to make new changes. And so, yes, this is um, a new, a new addition is that you get a mid-year update, and that's what we're doing today. Next slide. And to take it even a step further, what is the LCAP? So the local control accountability plan is a three-year plan. It's updated annually. So I'll bring it to the board each and every June, and it's required to have a first reading, and then it has a second reading, and it needs to be approved um, before the end of June. Uh, it identifies goals. It aligns with all of our other plans, and the funding is from our local control funding formula. Um, it requires districts or COEs to increase and improve services for eligible pupils, including socio-economically disadvantaged students, English learners, and foster youth. Next slide, please. Okay, so there's, there are going to be two slides that look just like this. Essentially, we are mid-year. So there are metrics, and then there's the actions. And so at this point, basically what the majority of what you're going to see is what's available at this time in terms of our metrics. Some metrics like state tests and local tests, they're not available right now. Some metrics um, are available. Next slide, please. And then same here for expenditures and implementation of actions. So right now, everything should be in progress if it's going as planned or on track. Um, however, there are things that change, like staffing. For example, people leave, they switch departments. And so I'm going to go through each goal, and then what I'm required to do is note anything that is significant. So any significant changes. Otherwise, you'll see the report just says on track, moving along fine, in progress. Next slide, please. All right, so I won't read these word for word, but here it is. All of our five goals for our current LCAP plan, which is coming to the end of its three-year term. So essentially, our first goal is really rooted in who we are um, with regard to academics. And we're very proud of the fact that we are, have an individually tailored program, which really meets students where they are. The second goal is really around social, emotional growth and safety and supports. Third one, as you know, we are deeply invested and rooted in our community, and we partner with many community agencies and encourage and promote students to be civic-minded and to be engaged in their community and to be leaders. Goal four and five are required goals for county offices of education. Goal four is regarding um, the countywide plan for expelled youth, which will also sunset this year. And I will bring a presentation for a new plan coming up. And then goal five is coordination for foster youth countywide. So I wanted to highlight community feedback. Usually in a traditional year, we do our local surveys in the spring. This year, because we are having our um, WASC visit, our Western Association of Schools and College Committee coming next month, and you'll all be invited to some snazzy events, um, we decided to move up all of our local surveys to the fall and winter so that we could have all the current data to build a six-year plan. Because of that, we have a lot of data for this mid-year report that we typically wouldn't have. You would see a lot of things saying in progress, in progress in terms of metrics. But we moved up all of our surveys because of WASC, and so we have a lot of our data right now, and it will make uh, writing the new LCAP a lot better. And I was really proud that we had huge community feedback, more so than we have in other years because we really amped it up because it's building the new LCAP, building the new WASC plan, and so we have a lot of feedback from our community members. Next slide, please. Okay, so goal one for highlights and changes. So goal one, like I said, is really our academic goal. So we are currently in progress maintaining and on our way with this goal. This is one of the only, this is the only goal, I believe, that we have anything that's significant that I need to note to you. So in this goal, we had two actions that will, um, our expenditures will be decreased. And that is because our wonderful multilingual TOSA and our wonderful college and career coordinator found new roles in different departments. Um, Barbara Hubner now works in our Ed Services Department um, as our mark multilingual coordinator. And then Jack Michael, who was our college and career coordinator, switched to Career and Adult Learning Services in a new leadership capacity. So good things, growth in, in our um, in, in our organization. However, mid-year wasn't the time to fly new jobs because people are already on contract, so we're going to be flying new jobs for the next year. So we got by this year. So the expenditures for those roles might, um, you might see a decrease in them because of that shift. So that's the only noteworthy thing I need to mention for goal one. Goal two? Uh, this is one we're really extremely proud of. We have grown our counseling team. A lot of the ESER and extra fundings that came in after COVID allowed us to enhance and hire more coun, um, counselors. And it has um, shown to be a very positive, have a very positive impact. And we're, we're so excited to see that we've been able to maintain and keep our counseling services, professional development as well. Goal three, um, so we continue to have our community parent and family engagement coordinators and specialists. Um, uh, we have increased um, our, our belligerent staff, so we, we're paying more um, belligerent stipends, and that is amazing. Um, and our contracts with community organizations still on track, on target. And goal four and go, goal five, both, there are no um, changes with these and nothing significant to note. Goal four, we're going to be in development for a new countywide plan, and that's, we're about to embark upon that journey with our local school districts. And then for goal five, our student support services team and foster youth team is still coordinating services throughout the county for all of our districts and alternative education. So last but not least, um, talking about the budget overview for parents. So it's really interesting for the requirement for our LCAP, we have to bring our budget overview for parents in June. But then things change after July one. So every single year when we do the mid-year update, you'll see as adopted in, in June, and then you'll see amount per budget act. And it will always be a little different because as um, was just mentioned in the previous presentation, we're funded off of year end. That's June thirtieth. Unlike districts that are funded off of P two, where they have their attendance numbers, they already know that in June. We're in a very unique state, all, all COEs are, where we don't know our end numbers until after the requirement of the LCAP to go forward. So they will always be different, so just expect that each year. They'll be a little bit different, and that's why. And that is it. Under forty-five minutes, so.
Very good.
And, and also just note, we, um, myself and my, my colleague Sony, who will present next, we chose to do a really extensive template. There is no template for this. I can, we could just do a slide deck that's five slides long, and there's, there's no requirement. But we really wanted to use this as an opportunity just to um, go through, this is our current LCAP, here's where we're at. And then in, in June, we'll all, we can all reference, okay, that's, that's the former one, and then what we're going to do moving forward. So thank you so much for your extra time tonight.
Questions? No? You got it?
I have one little detail. So in other words, you're fulfilling the new law requirement simply by doing this report, right? Submit something to the state.
Correct. Yep, as this, it's just to present, it's, it's supposed to be a good, like, hey, mid-year, and it actually works when you switch and you get new board members in December. It's a perfect time to say, hey, let's just focus five minutes on this. This is what it is. And then we have this nice foundation. And it's perfect. It's the month before we have our WASC visit too. So I get to keep highlighting and plugging that one and get all my emails for invitations.
Any other questions or comments? I like this mid-year review.
There. All right, I'll do it again next year.
Really? The, uh, what sounds interesting is that we're going through WASC, but uh, this is really going to be helping to develop the ongoing or the new three-year. Will it be considered six-year, or will it be just an additional three years?
For the, for WASC?
Yes.
We're going for six.
No, WASC is six, isn't it?
Yeah, hopefully, yeah.
Uh, but LCAP is.
Yeah, a three, yeah, new three-year plan will come out, yeah. But really, after the feedback, I'll give you just a little highlight. Um, there's, there was a lot with um, wanting more, you know, more college and career in CTE. But I will say, a lot of what we have already, the foundations, the structure of our goals are not going to shift significantly. Um, there's a lot of positive growth and momentum that's happened and lots of changes, you know, because of obviously the pandemic. So it was really reassuring to see that counseling and community investment and involvement um, has, has been been, been really fundamentally the reason why people stay in our programs. And then individually tailored, not one size fits all is another thing that where we keep drawing significant numbers of students each year or maintaining.
Appreciate all of the work that goes into this and.
Labor of love.
From what I've seen, especially at the graduations, these are working, you know, so.
It was a great January graduation, I have to say. That was, it was, it was an extra special one this year.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
The next, uh, item seven point five, uh, local control or the LCAP supplement for the Santa Cruz County Career Advancement Center.
I'd like to, uh, yes, of course, like to welcome Ms. Sony Guerra Sanson, who's uh, uh, leading the, the Career Advancement Charter, and of course, also our Career and Adult Learning Services to give our uh, LCAP update. Welcome.
Thank you, Ferris. Good afternoon, everyone. Um, my presentation will be very similar to Jen's, as she mentioned. And uh, I'll walk through some of the highlights. No substantive changes to share with you really for our LCAP. Um, I wanted to start by extending my gratitude to her, but she left. Um, because we do work on these together, and it's super helpful to have a colleague that um, to work with. And then, of course, to our business department for helping uh, figure out those numbers, for pulling that mid-year. It's, it's a little bit challenging. Um, and then, of course, I have to acknowledge, even though they aren't here, our whole CAC team, because they're doing amazing work. Um, actually invited our superintendent to have dinner with us next week with our Spanish literacy class. Um, nothing, it, it's not like a big, big deal, but I want, I want him to come and, and just spend some time with us. There's some great things happening in, in that building out in Watsonville, and of course, across the street here too. So my sincere gratitude to the CAC team as well. Um, the first slide is also here, just the background that, that Jen walked us through as well as a requirement. She explained the template we decided to use. Um, and so here it is. Next slide, please. Um, a repeat slide, again, just in terms of what is the LCAP, I would highlight as Sue, as Trustee Roth was just asking about. Um, this is it. We're finishing the cycle this year, and so we'll be starting um, our new plan very soon. And next slide, please. So our metrics at this point, for the CAC, the metrics are even more challenging, I would say, than our partners in alternative education. Um, the standardized test scores don't work for our adult learners. Um, so the CAC, we do use our own local metrics, and many as well are in progress. Some highlights on the next slide of metrics that we do have that I wanted to share with y'all. Um, we had thirty-six graduates in January. That's a lot for a little program like ours. Um, we have currently today enrolled about a hundred and seventy-five students, which is outstanding for the CAC. Um, and to. Um, and to graduate thirty-six mid-year create, it's wonderful and it creates some challenges, right? Because we need to, we need to get students in. Um, also, we have a metric of, um, looking at credit accrual. What we have right now is fifty-seven percent of our students have earned at least twenty-two credits semester one, which is also, that's, that's higher than, than ever before. So we're really proud of that. Um, and then our ADA for P1 is one fifty, which is exceeding our enrollment projections. And I anticipate for P2, it'll be, uh, probably around one seventy. So we're doing really well, uh, with our enrollment and our ADA. Next slide. Uh, expenditures and implementation, you'll see the same thing in the plan that you have in terms of many things being uh, partially implemented, um, as what, because we're, we're right in the middle of the year. So just wanted to highlight that. Next slide. So goal one for us is all-around achievement. As Dr. Isan Gonzalez pointed out, it's really three buckets, buckets as well. And they won't change very much for us either. We have three goals. The first one's all-around achievement. Um, of course, with the focus of our high school diploma or equivalency. And some of the highlights and changes here, we're, we are fully implementing the CASAS assessment, which is the comprehensive adult student assessment system. Again, a meaningful metric for adult learners. Um, and we have also added evening student learning sessions, both intervention and enrichment. So we have ESL, we have math support, we still have our culinary CTE classes, we have our Plazas Comunitarias, which is Spanish literacy classes. Um, and so we were very proud of that as well. And just a couple of months ago, this, this is one change that we've made, is that we have added a 1.0 FTE teacher who is teaching here at the Annex in Santa Cruz and, uh, have that teacher has gone to Watsonville. So we've, we've gained a teacher, um, and I'm actually thinking we might need one more. So we'll, we'll see. Uh, goal two, please. So goal two is all about student support. Uh, some of the changes here, we, we do have two, we did have two transition specialists. Uh, one change is that currently we have one person who is our transition specialist. The other person, uh, is in a new position as project coordinator overseeing, um, our, our grant application for our dental assisting program. Um, we are applying with the California Apprenticeship Initiative to turn that program into a paid apprenticeship for students. Uh, so she's still with us, and however, the transition support is a little bit different right now. Um, we have increased our CTE programming, making CAC students priority students for these programs. You know about the medical and dental assisting programs. Those are longstanding COE programs. Additionally, we have our Building Trades Pre-Aprenticeship, uh, Program and brand new pilot that we're in week three of, or week, week three is our Wildland Fire Academy. Uh, have to be eighteen. It's a partnership with CalFire and the California Conservation Corps. Um, so that's another option that our CAC students have. And we are offering childcare at the Sequoia facility, and I put early care and learning because there is an intentional design to what the children are doing when they're there in the evening. In addition to a healthy dinner, um, they're also engaging in meaningful learning activities that are fun and developmentally appropriate. It's just, it's more than like babysitting. Uh, goal three. So goal three is all-around community engagement and partnerships. Some of our highlights and changes, another thing I wanted to highlight, we have implemented the student intake process, really mirroring what, what we brought from alternative education and the power of sitting with individuals one at a time. Something we've added just mid-January, so a month ago, is an orientation. We're inviting students to come and be part of a group orientation. We have had thirty-nine students attend just in the last month. So we graduated thirty-six. We've already got in thirty-nine. Um, and Jesus Reyes is a big part of that. You may or may not know him. Um, but he's working really hard to get students through and, and really make sure they understand what, what the commitment is so that they're prepared to, to start. And the other, the other big piece here is our goal consortium. It's the Adult Education Consortium that we are a part of. Um, we find meaningful ways to collaborate and work with our adult head partners, um, outside of just the board meetings, right? So we're meeting in between to collaborate and, and work together. Um, so that's goal three. And on the next slide, our budget overview for parents is no different. Um, there were no, no changes that, that I need to update you to our LCFF revenue. So what was in our original LCAP is, is still the same. Um, and I think there's just one more slide. Uh, so alternative ed, they, like she said, they're doing all their feedback because of WASC. We haven't really started yet. Um, we're just starting our formal feedback process. So you'll hear more about the outcomes and, um, those data points in the spring. And we don't, we don't have, you know, parent groups. We call it a student advisory. We have adult students who come and inform us, um, provide their insight and feedback. And then, as mentioned in the beginning, new LCAP cycle will be beginning. Um, so you'll see a new plan with likely very similar goals, different actions and, um, different, you know, be slightly different, but similar. And that is the mid-year update for the CAC. Um, thank you so much for your, both your time and your support, your ongoing support, Dr. Sabah, and if there's any questions for me.
Two things. On that advisory council that you just mentioned, is that, um, just current students, adult students, or is it past, you know, graduates?
It is, it is currently students who are enrolled, although we do have alumni coming, they still come by for transition support and whatnot, but currently it is enrolled students.
Well, the second thing I want to say is it's really hard not to be pretty emotional about having thirty-six graduates. And I just congratulate you and, and our, the whole system here for, um, growing the CAC to what it is today. This is really important work, and those numbers are small compared to the whole county or the whole state or whatever, but it's very significant in those people's lives. And that's, that's what gets me.
That's right. Thank you. Thank you, Bruce.
I, I want to, I, I feel the same way, uh, as Bruce. And to participate in the graduation ceremony and thinking it was mid-year, uh, I was impressed. But I see where it kind of, you have to get more people in now.
Right.
Um, and did I understand that you're doing a kind of, uh, individual intake like we do with, uh, our regular alternative education?
Correct. Yeah. So I, I started my career here in alternative education and, um, something that really lent itself to being in the CAC was I got to take all the good stuff I knew in alternative ed and apply it to the CAC. Um, so the intake is, I think it's one of the most important functions that we do at the county office and sitting individually with students and families. So yes, we, we, um, have replicated that.
And it, I mean, it's probably pretty extensive, but how is your outreach to get them to come, uh, in?
Well, it's definitely, um, it's always an area that we're working on. Um, and they seem to keep coming. So I think our students are our biggest advocates. They, they refer their cousins, their tias, their friends. Um, so we get a lot of people word of mouth. Um, that's probably our main, the main way they come. The other, the other thing, the other factor is that um, students who were freshmen, ninth graders, the beginning of the pandemic are now what we would call fifth-year seniors. And so we're seeing many younger students who I think, um, struggled through the pandemic and are, are needing that, that extra time, the second, third, fourth, tenth chance. So, um, that's one of my theories of what's happening with our increased enrollment right now. Yeah.
Uh, the, uh, Fire Academy.
Yeah.
Want to know more about that.
Super exciting opportunity. Yeah, it kind of fell into our lap and, uh, we, so the CCC, California Conservation Corps and CalFire have a partnership already, and they weren't getting enough students. Um, and so it, it was definitely, we had been working on trying to build something like this. We have, uh, Laura Terrazas is a former CalFire, and she's our RSP teacher in the CAC. She's really passionate about that profession. Um, so she'd been doing a lot of research and it, it just, it happened that way. And, um, it was really fast. And I needed help from the business department. I needed, I needed help from AlTED. Like, it took, it took a lot of collaboration to, to start. Um, we had five students who made it through kind of the preliminary, and we have three who are in the academy right now. This is their day four with, uh, with CalFire. So we're going to do a second session. There they are. Thank you, Ferris. Um, so the, we have two alternative education students here too. So, uh, one graduated Freedom Community in January and the other from El Nido. So these five young, they're all young. They, they're like eighteen and nineteen. Um, and two of them need to, one got, one got sick, so he's going to do the second session, and the other one needed more time. Um, but they, just the uniform alone, it's so many different pieces. You gotta have the right belt, the right boots, the, the right shirt. Like, you can't have long sleeves. And so that was a bear, it was a challenge. Um, and again, I have to thank Melissa for helping me figure out the boots, um, how to get them for the students. We're providing the transportations. There's a lot of things. And so I like to do pilots because you learn a lot. And so we're learning a lot right now and preparing for our second one.
And where is the, this being offered?
It's in Watsonville. So we did our prerequisite classes at Sequoia Schools in the evening. And, um, now they're showing up every day to the California Conservation Courts on Airport Boulevard, right by the fire station. So again, one of, one of the things I'm most passionate about is increasing programming in South County in Watsonville. Um, and so being able to offer it there is, is really, really great too. So they want to keep working with us. They, they want to keep working with us. So you will hear more about this opportunity. Um, and it's a livable wage. It, it's, it's a good start for people. It's a foot in the door. And they can certainly make a career out of it if they choose, and it's hard work.
And it, it will have a, a kind of a lead into being a regular fireman, or is it only going to be kind of?
That'll be up to the student. So there's, I mean, this is, the CalFire is a, it's a state fire, uh, system. And then I think what you're describing is the municipal, which are like the ones in town. Um, those are more competitive, more competitive. I think that they want those folks to have their paramedics license and in some cases even a bachelor's degree. CalFire is like the, the public get in, great benefits, lots of hours. Um, I think what these young people are finding out is it's really hard work. It's really hard work and, uh, not super glamorous. So, um, and it's a foot in the door. And for some folks who need housing, for example, you know, these are seasonal firefighters or they will be. But they would have, they would have a place to stay the majority of the time that they're employed. Um, so a lot of benefits for our, for our community.
Thank you.
If I could, uh, just. So I, I think Sony is being, uh, uh, humble and saying that it just kind of fell in our lap. I think, I think all the work that's happening in terms of being a nimble organization, you know, we're a large organization at the same time. To be able to put this together in a matter of weeks, um, there was other partners that were approached, and we were the ones that said, yes, we'll want this, we want to take this. And so I think that a lot of the work that, that Sony has done for this, for the CAC, to really make us, uh, work as quickly and, and effectively to be able to bring new programs and to really customize those programs for the needs of students. It's, it's, uh, it's, we are a larger organization, but we're functioning as a, as a small nimble one. And I think that that, when I think about the, the Plazas Comunitarias, the different services, we're adapting to the needs of the community that's coming. We're not saying, well, you know what? You don't fit our model, so sorry. Um, these young people, if they continue with CalFire, they'll be eligible for salaries over four thousand dollars a month. Um, you know, and that's a great start for a career and, and, um, and so the, the impacts, as, as you said, Bruce, are deep and profound. And, and we're going to continue to grow this program, but also grow it in a way that is thoughtful, responsible. And I also, when I say nimble, I think about all the people as just like, uh, you know, Sony mentioned that, that Melissa helped with the boots. Um, Laura Terrazas helped find, uh, authentic gear for, for students that was, that was donated. Um, it's, you know, Casus is out there looking for students, uh, bringing them in and encouraging them, getting them excited. And then the instructional program is, is excellent, uh, that, and, and they're, they're not only learning about this program, but they're learning about other opportunities. And so it is really, uh, uh, an outstanding program that is continuing to grow and thrive. And I think about, uh, this board's support when we first established this charter school, uh, what was it, seven years ago? And, um, and, you know, it's continuing to blossom and, and with many thanks to, to Sony and, and the staff.
Ferris, thank you. You will hear, hear more about this, this project for sure. Did you have another question?
I just think, I, I just see it as another pathway for, for youth that not quite sure which way they want to go.
That's right.
Thank you so much for your report.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Okay.
Next, we're moving into new business and action items. Yes?
I'll move my agenda. Um, uh, eight point one, uh, oh, that has been tabled. We may see it, we may not see it again. And then eight point two, approval of resolution twenty-four dash oh five, recognizing March as a disability awareness month. Dr. Sabah, do you want to introduce this, Sandra? Eight point two.
Go ahead. I'm sure Ferris can do a far better job of it. I'll pass it over to him.
Okay. Thank you very much. And, uh, you know, one of the, one of the, uh, aspects of our, of our work in equity is, is inclusion, equity, inclusion and, and diversity. And inclusion, uh, means celebrating all our students, all our students and giving, making sure that all of them have, have the opportunities and the supports and the systems in place to, uh, so make sure that the, that the places are designed for them, right? And, uh, and so when we think about, uh, students who, who come to us with, with disabilities, I think about my son, who has a disability. And the kinds of things, the responsibility, the heavy responsibility we have as an educational system to ensure that we are doing everything we can to support those students and really celebrate them as, uh, and their uniqueness as we celebrate all other, all, all students who bring different parts of themselves and bring all of themselves to school. And we celebrate what makes them unique and also what we, we have in common. And so this is a tradition that goes back, uh, I believe to the eighties. Um, and, uh, something that, that, uh, make sure that we, we stand proud with, with all our students um, and recognize that the, that their disabilities are, uh, part of the diversity that brings richness to our schools. And so this resolution really is about standing up and uplifting our students with disabilities.
Uh, this is the first time we have done this, no?
I don't think so.
You've done this before?
Okay, well.
They, they grow old after a year. Then they go in the circular five.
Okay. It's going right through my head. I'm just glad that we are doing it, so. Uh, uh, any questions or comments?
I'd like to, I'd like to make a comment. Um, awareness, you know, that word is, 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 can be challenging sometimes. You know, if you don't, not in a specific situation, it's, um, you might not understand. Um, and I bring it up specifically with this item because I have been, um, had a rough couple of weeks. I've, uh, been unexplainably, unexplainably, um, been having back pain. And that has been debilitating at a certain, to a certain extent. And, you know, they say you don't know what you have until it's gone. And I am fortunate and I am optimistic, right, that it's, um, temporary. But it's, it, it really opens up your eyes again, w- once you no longer have your health, right? Once you can't really function like you used to be, uh, it really opens up your eyes and, and, and personally, I've, I've struggled, you know, it's, 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 it's been challenging trying to stay focused, trying to pay attention when, you know, medication that you take. you know, medication that you take makes you drowsy, right? It's, it's frustrating when you drop something on the ground and you have limited mobility, you know, and it physically hurts and, and something so simple, right? That before you would never really pay attention to. So that word awareness, you know, is, I think is, is, is very crucial. And, and I think what comes to mind is, is just compassion. You know, it's, it's, I don't understand what people are going through. I don't understand, you know? We all go through certain situations, we all go through different stages and aspects and parts of life. But just having that compassion, right? And, and knowing that, I don't know what it feels like, you know? I don't know what you're going through, but it's having that compassion, saying I'm here, you know? And to support and to encourage and to motivate, I, I think definitely goes a long way, even when it doesn't make sense, just the fact that you bring it up and just the fact that you offer a helping hand. I, I think, I think that definitely makes, makes a difference. So this year I am looking at this resolution a little bit different, you know, just than I have in the past, just because I feel like I am more of an appreciation again for what I have and compassion, you know, for those who are struggling. So, that's all. Sure. And with that, I'll make the motion to approve resolution 24 05, recognizing March as disability awareness month.
Motion and a second. Oscar. Oh, actually, you're going to enroll, oh, sorry, Berenice.
No worries, trustee, President Roth. Trustee Alvarez Delgado?
Yes.
Trustee Ulta? Trustee Estrada?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Trustee Sanchez?
Yes.
Trustee Van Allen? President Roth?
Yes.
Next, eight point three, close to my heart, approval of resolution 24 dash 06, recognizing March as Women's History Month. And you, between Sandra and Dr. Sabah.
I feel like we just did this, recognizing Women's History Month. I, I feel that we, we added a lot of people's names into this and I'm not sure whether they're still in here, but we have, we have some, some women in, in politics in this county and, and one of the people that might be added to this. I, I love that they wrote in that there's, there's a Native American woman to be proud of, Sacagawea. And I, I just love that she's in there, that, that we have included people from all different kinds of backgrounds. And other people are, are, are mentioned in here. You can see their names pop out. I think we added all, quite a few people last time and, and they motivated me to go to the library and get books about these women. So that's a, that's something that I like to recognize now for the resolution and, and also just around the community. Gail Pellerin has advanced from county clerk to, to state assembly woman. And she, she was elected previously and she, her terms, she's, she's running for office again. I'm not advocating for her, I'm just mentioning her as another strong woman in leadership. She, she brought women together at her house. Maybe, maybe you were there, Sue? Yes, we went over to Gail Pellerin's house, which she hadn't really lived in, but she and her husband had bought and then her husband passed. Yeah. Passed away. Yeah. And, and so she never really lived in that house, but we had a good, good gathering there of, of women who had, who were elected politicians in this county. And I think there were about thirty, thirty women.
Or more.
Or more, yeah.
Encouraging us to reach out, carry the message. Wasn't her running for office at all.
Oh, no. No, I, I, it surprised me when her name popped up for a candidate for assembly. And I'm proud of her because she was always a very competent county clerk and elections department clerk. And she, she handled her job with friendliness and a huge background of knowledge and how people are supposed to behave when they're politicians.
If I could just add, I, you know, the last part of the resolution states that despite these contributions and, and the role of women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued. The literature, teaching, labor, business and the study of history. And I really appreciated that line and recently there's a mention of, of the Montgomery boycott, bus boycott in the, and, and a mention of Rosa Parks in, in this resolution. And I had the fortune of being able to visit Montgomery, Alabama, just, just a few weeks ago. And the, there was a focus there in, in many of the civil rights pieces about the, the voices that are, were unheard, of the sacrifices that were, were, were forgotten by so many women in the civil rights movement. And, and I think that that is, that's what this resolution is about, really is. One is celebrating many people, the many women who are, many who are listed here, but also really a, a, a call to, to be sure that we are, we are thinking about so many voices, both in history and in our, in our present and of course our future, that we need to continue to, to hear and listen and, and who are, are leading and, and being part of, of the great work that's taken place.
Work to be done.
Absolutely.
Yes, Bruce?
Yeah, nowhere near done. I'd like to move the resolution. Twenty four dash six, recognizing March as Women's History Month. And I can't duplicate what anybody else said, but I could just say in my own life, women's leadership and women asserting their own existence, you know, and beyond is, has been extremely influential for me and beneficial. And I'm glad I grew up in a time when our society is grappling with the patriarchy and the, and the heritage of so much oppression and, and discounting of women and girls. So I make.
And it's not ongoing. That's what I'm doing.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Sandra. So, Berenice?
Trustee Alvarez Delgado?
Yes.
Trustee Ulta?
Yes.
Trustee Estrada?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Trustee Sanchez?
Yes.
Trustee Van Allen? President Roth?
Yes.
So moving on, we are going to look at a resolution 24 dash 07, in support of Watsonville Community Hospital, that's a bond measure, N, currently going on. And I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Sabah.
Thank you. Many of you were a part of the process to bring the community hospital back to the community from it being owned by, by a private corporation. This is a measure that is on the ballot for March and we see this as another step that would help support the community hospital. It is a ballot measure that would allow the healthcare district to acquire the, the property that surrounds the hospital, which currently is in the, in the hands of a, of a corporation and charging $3 million in rent on an annual basis. Those funds could be used to improve the hospital and improve the services. The, the bond would also help acquire new equipment and make upgrades to the hospital. We see the hospital as a fundamental part of the fabric of the systems of support for our community. The trust, the PV Health Trust area goes all the way from, from kind of the Paharo area, the southern part of the PVSD School District boundary, close to the APTOS boundary of the PVSD area. So it's, it's really a large area. But we also recognize that if, if the hospital were not to be able to continue offering services, the impact it would have on that community, the long distances that they would have to drive and then on all the other hospitals, how they would be overwhelmed with, with. So we see this as a, something that is really important and, and we hope that you'd consider approving this resolution in support of measure N, which is the bond measure that will be on the March ballot.
Any comments or questions?
I support it. I'll make the motion if no one else.
I have a comment.
To, to second the motion.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Sorry, I'll second. Yeah, I just want to make a comment that it is, I think it's a good asset to have in our community. And I think, ink in the head, maybe getting a little bit off subject, it'd be nice if we could potentially collaborate as well, you know, and kind of use that resource as a career path, you know, for anybody who is interested in medicine or the medical field. Just like we use some of our other resources like the fire, there's definitely a need for that. So I'm just excited at the opportunities that, that can come from that as well.
I just think it's critical. Go ahead, Bruce.
Just one more little piece of context for me. I've, I've met some of the new board members, you know, because they have an elected board and some of them are for reelection. And I'm very impressed with that board and it's a community-based public hospital and that's just wonderful. So again, I strongly support this, the, the funding measure and I see the same idea of potential collaboration, but also in terms of the services that we provide to our students and staff, that having a major health facility augments our, you know, the community's ability to, to take care of ourselves, including through us, through our programs and so on. Seems really good to me.
Okay. Berenice?
Student trustee Alvarez Delgado?
Yes.
Trustee Ulta?
Yes.
Trustee Estrada?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Trustee Sanchez?
Yes.
Trustee Van Allen?
Aye.
President Roth?
Definitely.
Our next discussion is item eight point five, scheduling a special board meeting for us in meeting with CSBA's consultant, Luanne Rivera. And there are three dates which she is available for and that I believe we have knowledge that we are all available also. So I'm not going to say. So is there a discussion?
President Roth, I'm sorry, I just want to remove one of them. June 29th is not available for all of our board. Thank you.
We have two. Saturday, May 18th and Saturday, June 15th. So is there anyone not available either of those days or would like to see it more in May than in June?
I'm wondering, since we already are going to have two meetings in June, because we have to have those two separate meetings, that maybe this ought to be in May, so we don't pile too much on that month. But I don't, either one I could make.
I agree about May, also because June 16th is Father's Day. So I don't know if people have plans or will make plans for that day, so I just think May would work better.
So we can cancel the other days that we had holding for. Those two dates are the, the ones that the most can come and attend.
And I believe we need to let Luanne know as soon as possible.
And.
Her availability.
And this is an action item, since we are adding a special board meeting, not revising the calendar. So a motion and a second needs to be made.
Move that the board have the special meeting with the advisor on May 18th.
I'll second.
So any further comment?
And our student trustee will be participating in this workshop.
Yes.
Student trustee Alvarez Delgado?
Yes.
Trustee Ulta? Trustee Estrada?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Trustee Sanchez?
Yes.
Trustee Van Allen?
Aye.
President Roth?
Yes.
Do we have a time that we're looking at?
Nine to one, I think.
Correct. Nine to one with a light breakfast refreshments and lunch will be provided.
Thank you, Berenice. I, we're ready for you, Dr. Sabah.
All right. Wonderful. Thank you so much. So it's my pleasure to give the board a, a brief superintendent's update. And let's go to the next slide, please. I'd like to start by just sharing some new staff that have joined the COE in the last, in the last month or so. And many of them are instructional aides and instructional positions that are replacing other folks who have left. But we, I did want to do a special introduction to our new director of school safety, Rishi Lal. And Rishi is coming to us from Santa Cruz City Schools. He is an outstanding leader and administrator and he's going to be in, in responsible for helping us to continue our work when it comes to building safe schools. And so if we, if you were to go into the next, we're going to go forward and then, and then go back. And so I, when I, in our, once Rishi was able to join us as, and start in his new role, we met to talk a little bit about all the different areas that encompass school safety. And it's really a broader view of, of school safety when I think about what it means to have safe spaces for students, how to have places where we have the resources and the systems in place to ensure that we are really ready to support all our students and be able to respond to the many potential hazards that exist in, in our, in our society. And so these, some of these areas, you'll see that emergency operations and response, you know, when we think about all the weather challenges that we're experiencing, for example, also threat assessment protocols and, and our new, our new command response for schools, which is how we respond to certain situations that, that could occur. Creating safe spaces, addressing issues like bullying and fentanyl, the challenges of fentanyl and opioids, challenges in our schools, helping schools with our safety plans that are required and do very soon. Also partnering with law enforcement and other partners to ensure that we are really building on that partnership and, and, and working together. And also building our, the resources that are available, both digitally and, and, and other ways and building professional development to help our educational community be more aware, more, and have the resources and the skills that they need to be able to respond effectively. I did want to share that I got a chance to work with Rishi. We've known each other for some time, but when we had the hoax that took place at Santa Cruz High School, Rishi was in charge of the process to get students reconnected, reunified with their parents. And it, you could imagine this took place at, what was the name of the park? At Depot Park. And parents were, as you can imagine, quite concerned and, and students were coming, being bused in. It was, and Santa Cruz High School, the, the whole district did an outstanding job. But a star in that, in, in bringing order to chaos was, was Rishi. I got to stand next to him as he was helping to organize, calm parents down. He showed his true colors, his heart as he was connecting with families. He, he calmed them down and, and assured them that they were, everybody was going to be okay. He calmed them down and assured them that everybody was going to be okay, and helped really manage that reunification process. And so in our work together, his work providing student program support services at Santa Cruz City Schools, we just knew that when this position opened up, that he would be a great fit. And in the two weeks, 10 days that he's been with us, we know that he really belongs here at the County Office of Education. And so I was hoping that Rishi could come to the microphone and just share a little bit about more about himself. And in the future, he'll be coming back to share about some of the efforts that were... Rishi, would you mind going to the lectern and just telling us a little bit about why your background and why you've come to the COE?
Thank you, Dr. Savah. And it's an honor to be here in front of the board today and the trustees. And I'm, first of all, I kind of want to keep Dr. Savah with me everywhere I go, because he always just flipposts me to be this amazing person. So I'm just very humbled to be in this organization. And I came to Santa Cruz County Office of Ed from Santa Cruz City Schools after 10 years because I see the work that has been done over the past 10 years, too. And the amount of love and support that has been provided, especially to Santa Cruz City Schools. And coming here, I've just been blessed by being part of this family. Prior to coming to Santa Cruz, I am a Sacramento native, and I started my career as an instructional aide for students with emotional disturbance in a special education classroom. And from there, I became a special education teacher, and then I moved to Santa Cruz with my partner in 2014, where I started teaching special education at Santa Cruz High School. And then I was able to become an assistant principal at that site, where I was really focused on building culture and a safe place at that school, and building the camaraderie, because that's part of, I believe, the preventative methods for alleviating us from, though that beautiful graphic of having to like implement any of those things, but we're prepared for. Now, at the district office, when I was working last year as the safety and wellness coordinator, I was able to learn a little bit more about standard command response for schools, attend ICS and the incident command trainings that was provided by the COE. And basically, I am very passionate about having a safe school space, just understanding what it was like growing up to be a student who was a little different, who had been bullied sometimes, and really wanted to make sure that, you know, students have a place to go, because that stuff will happen. But we want to make sure that they're, have a safe space and a safe person to connect with. And so in addition to the graphic of all these various areas and making that connection with all of the different components and curating these resources for people, I really want to make sure that, you know, from the physical, the environmental, to the social, emotional, and now cyber, that we have all those safety protocols in place. And so I'm really honored to be here. And if you have any questions about anything, you can ask me now, but I'm always available. And, but come by and visit if you have a chance.
Welcome to the family.
Thank you. I'm so blessed.
And one thing I noticed was that we're going to address e-bikes. Yes.
E-bikes.
In fact, yes, that's something that has been a growing concern from the medical community with the new, there's class one, class two, and class three e-bikes that go up to 28 miles an hour and are really causing a lot of risks. So we are taking a look at some programs to be able to bring awareness.
Because the community is now growing restless about it.
Right.
I'd also want to share that Rishi is working on his law degree. He's been working on it and hopefully become, finishing up in December. And so he'll be a J.D., which was very exciting. So congratulations on that. Thank you so much for coming, Rishi.
Thank you.
Thank you. So back to some of the new hires, and one of the, a really important piece here is that I did want to share that Angela Meker, Dr. Angela Meker, has shared her, that she plans to retire. And I won't be able to convince her this time to stay on, as I was able to last year. And so she serves as our associate superintendent of services. And so we are in the process right now of finding the person that would take Angela's position here. And so I think Angela is still going to be working with us, maybe just in a different capacity, because she brings so much knowledge and skill and has done such an outstanding job that I don't think we will be able to let her go. She has really been amazing at her job and an amazing partner and part of our cabinet. So it's, I'm so grateful to her for delaying her retirement and staying on with us. But this is a key position in our, for our team. And so we are, we've been fortunate to have a good number of applicants applied, and we're going through a process to, so we hope to, the next two, three weeks, to narrow that, those applicants down. Person that will be our next associate superintendent. I did want to share with you that we did recently have a data breach that, by Keenan, that Keenan, who is our insurance provider, you may have received a notification in your home. Keenan does, they manage a lot of, they're basically our insurance provider, and so they, they have access to a lot of our information. And many of us is, our private information was included in that breach. The letter that was provided to you did, does explain a recommendation to, or encourage you to take some steps to protect your identity. And I do have to tell you that, that a lot of different folks are experiencing these breaches. And so it's possible that this is not the first time that your information has been, you know, accessed. And so we have to be vigilant and do everything we can to ensure that, that folks are not taking advantage of our information. I did also want to share with you that we also experienced a cyber attack last week? It was like weeks ago, maybe? But our systems worked, and fortunately, the attack was not successful. There was some brief disruptions to certain services, and, but we were able to respond effectively. And the attack, which was a ransomware attack, that, what they do is they try to get into your system, they try to, they take all your data, store it remotely, and then they encrypt all of your servers and, so that you can't access any of your, and then they ask for money to not publish your, your information on the dark web and to give you a key to unlock all of the devices that have been locked up. So fortunately, our tech team did an outstanding job in ensuring, protecting our services. I have to give kudos to Leanne Reyes and Jason Borgan. Leanne helped us get many of our essential resources off of the servers that are physically located here and onto the cloud, where they're protected by a variety of different systems. And Jason has been, Jason Borgan, our technology, chief technology officer, has been building more and more systems to kind of, you know, protect this very crucial sensitive data that exists. And also, so when, when the attack took place, we were alerted quickly, we were able to kind of scramble the right resources, put them in place, and able to shut the systems down that were, that had been compromised and, and went through a system of cleaning it all up. And so there was no, fortunately, no damage to our systems, our schools were protected. We also learned from it. And one of the things that we decided to do is to change everybody's passwords. So hence, you have to remember a 15-character password, which somehow is at least one character way too long, because 15 just seems like way too much to remember. But, but the tech team will help you if you haven't already gotten the support to, because you have to do it while you're connected here in the building. And it is one of the steps that we're taking to ensure that it becomes more difficult. We never say that we're, that nobody can get in, because there's always a way. But we make it more difficult and what we call a harder target for these folks. Another step that we're taking are the, is the check-in for being in the lobby, and many of you have seen that, we asking everybody to bring their, to wear their IDs when they're in the building, or if you forget it, like I do sometimes, I already took mine off, but to get one of the printed passes, so that we know if somebody's walking around, we don't recognize them, or they don't have an ID, we can say, "Hi, can I help you?" And then we could find out if they're, if it's, if they belong in the building or not. And I do have to say that you just, many of you just got your IDs, but we just changed the design for our IDs. And so they're going to look like that, they look a little bit better, the new ones, you'll be getting new ones very shortly. So the new designs, the 2024 design is going to be out very, very soon. I also wanted to share with you a couple of exciting opportunities. One is, well, I'm actually going to go to, let's go to the next. Really exciting things that are happening. So Monday is a holiday for us, a President's Day holiday on Monday. We are going to be, we have our mock trial, which is, our finals are taking place on February 22nd, so that'll be where the final mock trial takes place. You know, these are the high school teams that are amazing. They have, they compete against each other, and we'll have a winner announced that evening. We will be having a teacher recruitment fair on February 24th, and we're always trying to bring in the very best people into our, into our schools to support our students. It's not only for our programs, but it's really for all districts. And very exciting is our annual event, which is taking place on February 29th at Sequoia High School. And this is the celebration, where we present our annual report, we talk about the achievements of the COE. We really would love to have you there. It's very fun. We'll have some speakers who are going to be there, we'll have students. I believe that, that you're going to be presenting with us, that even you're one of our keynote speakers. And we'll have some other speakers as well that are going to be presenting on the, that evening. And then we'll have student performances, and then food made by our culinary arts group there at Sequoia High School. And so just a lot of exciting excitement, and it is an opportunity for us to hear about some of the things that we've been working on, and also as we're looking to the future for the COE and for our county. So I hope you, I hope you can make it through. We, on March 9th, we are having our STEAM Expo, which is our, we used to, you know, just have a science fair. Well, a science fair is not enough. We need to do a science fair, we need to celebrate, you know, science and technology and engineering and the arts and math, lots of opportunities for students to show their talent. And so yes, there's going to be a science fair, and we would love it if you would be interested in being a judge for, you don't have to have expertise in a science field to be a judge, or just be a volunteer for that, for that, for that day. We have two-hour shifts that you can help out in, and we are definitely looking for volunteers for that day. And so it would be wonderful if you could join us. The STEAM Expo really is, we need volunteers for three days, so not just that, that one day, but we have, so if you can't make it on that day, there's other days that you can do it. And if you remember, last year, we had this wonderful plan, and the weather had made us intervene, and the facility was not available to us. And so that, and so Dr. Heather Wiegand, who's been, who's our health, our science coordinator, has been working hard on, on getting this Expo, giving it the, the treatment it deserves and the attention it deserves from our, from our community. We'd love it if you could be there. And then finally, on March 28th, we are partnering with the Museum of Art and History and also Lookout at Santa Cruz, Lookout on a event for her story, which is celebrating women in, in, you know, past, present, and future. And so it should be a wonderful event at the MAU, and we would love it if you could join us. And there is a, we'll share via email, there is a, what do we call it? A tablet, a padlet, which is, you'll be able to share, share a little bit about that, Nick? Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Superintendent Savah. So the padlet is an opportunity for, an invitation really, for us to celebrate women in our lives who've been influential on us. It's open now, and really, we're trying to promote this throughout Women's History Month. It ties in with some activities that are available on the day of. Her Story is actually a game, too, which is really exciting, you'll be able to play that there. And, and this is really just, throughout the month, you'll see some social media activity around it. But if you'd like to contribute to the padlet, we will share a link with you, and you can share that story as soon as you'd like to. Thank you.
And just a shout out to Nicky Barra, our PIO and our director of communications, just, for doing just great work in helping us to promote just a lot of the messaging. I think you've seen how we've kind of increased our reach and our communications as, in all aspects, where all of us are thinking about how to reach our community, how to communicate best with, with our students, our staff, our, and, and Nick has been really helping us with improving the quality and the, and the reach of our, of our communication. So thank you, Nick. Moving on to our next slide, I did want to share with you, I, there we go. I did want to share with you that, that we have been working closely with Live Oak School District. You may have heard in the news or from community members. Live Oak was identified by, in our analysis, as having a negative budget for their first interim. And the education code requires us to evaluate the, how districts are doing, and when they submit their first interim report, we do a review of that report. And if the, there's a variety of different indicators that we look towards. One of them is that if, if the district is able to maintain their reserves of 3% for the next year and the year after that, and the district had identified their budget as qualified, meaning that they didn't think that they, that they, that they're, they would be able to maintain their reserves two years out. But when we conducted our evaluation, our business team felt that there was a concern about, in two areas. One is the reserves for next year, which is the 24, 25 school year, and cash flow issues, meaning that the cash flow, which is of course important for, you know, day-to-day, month-to-month transactions, payroll, acquiring resources, that was short, were shorthanded, not in a place that we felt was, was comfortable. And as a result of that, we notified the district in January that their first interim budget was, in fact, negative. Several steps, there's a, the education code has specific steps that have to take place, such as notifying the California Department of Education of this, and also the Fiscal Crisis and Management Assistance Team, which is FICMAT. I happen to be on the board of FICMAT right now. And, and it also really kind of activates our role as a county office to support the district, to help them through this financial crisis. And that's really, we have to provide oversight and support. We have asked the school district to provide us a fiscal stabilization plan. They've provided a preliminary plan on February 1st, and the final plan will be provided to us by March 15th. And so we're going to continue to work with them to provide support. We're going to be providing a fiscal expert who's going to be working with them to provide support, and FICMAT will be coming in to visit onsite and conducting interviews. And so we're working hard to provide that, that support and that oversight, and we're going to help them navigate through this, this challenging time. But we felt it was important for you to be aware of that. If you do receive any questions or, you know, from the media or anybody else, we would ask you to send them to the superintendent's office, so that we can help provide them the answers, what we are able to, to provide, and ensure that we're sharing some of the, you know, some of the, the, and understanding as well as, as why the, the school district is experiencing these, these challenges at this time. Do you have any questions for me about this?
I'm sorry. It's hard to go through.
And, and, you know, we see our role, you know, the ed code has some very specific definitions of our roles as a county office of education, and we're doing everything we can to, to help them, help them with this. I'm grateful to, to Leanne and our business services team and the work that we're going to continue to do, and the, and the hard work that the district is, is, is working on as they, as they work through this time. And that is it for my report. And that is it for my report.
Trustee reports.
Oscar. Yeah, I think I'd like to report the, we finished the, I finished the State of Mind podcast recording, which we finished last January. It's set to release at some point in March. We also, I also did a student panel here at the COE about what works, what works and what doesn't work. Educational, like our educational experience. And something that another panelist stood out to me, her name is Madeline. Also, do you remember her her writing that she that she published on Amazon? Yeah, I want to shout that out too for her. And yeah, she said that accommodations don't like also equal no challenges, which I think is very important, which I I think I took it as like there can be accommodations, but students also like challenges. So not making something too easy for students.
So the student is Madeline Alea. And and Madeline is a student at Cypress High School. She was on the panel. This is the book she published.
Yeah. And I think the last thing I would like to say is I'm very proud of a PV High in entrepreneurship class. They, students who actually established a business there and they were on the news on KSBW. They partnered, the teacher helped partner them with junior achievement. And the business called Rose, Rose Ever Floral. And they make a turn of roses for like Valentine's Day, or if you want to give it to someone special to you, or just come on for yourself too. Their email is roseeverfloral@gmail.com.
Do, excuse me, do they grow the roses or they just make up bouquets and displays?
So the roses are actually made out of ribbon.
Oh.
Yeah. And they make it themselves. They get the materials themselves and make it themselves. And they sell it to people on school and also people out of school.
Wonderful.
I was just thinking yesterday how expensive roses are and how I wish I wish they could last forever. Sounds like I have my solution now.
Also climate damaging.
Edward.
There we go. I went to my first graduation at Sequoia in on January nineteenth, a little bit after our last board meeting, and it was so great to see and so personalized, you know, since since it was such a small group, having teachers come up and talk about each individual student. It was amazing. And Sue got to speak and tried to get me to speak, but it was my first one. I will next time. But I was onstage, I was like, oh, my gosh, I thought I was just going to be right in the front. Just watching like everyone else. But it was was great. I loved it. I really understand why why Rose said that that's the best part of the job. And so that was amazing, and I can't wait to go to more in a few months. And I also, in my day job, had to go through an audit, so that's why I wasn't able to go to the Budget Perspectives workshop, but I'm glad that we got some more resources on looking at the budget, and I look forward to the Budget Committee and staying on top of, you know, our discussions as, you know, everything's up in the air with the state and trying to figure things out over the next few months and waiting to see how that pans out. So that's that's my report.
Thank you. Thank you.
I feel like a very, very busy person, but nothing in my busyness is worthy of being reported here today. So I have a lot of responsibilities and I do a lot of things and I don't just sit around, but I have nothing to report to you. Perhaps next month.
Thank you, Sandra.
I don't have a report this month either.
Mostly just kind of trying to keep an eye on the budget stuff at Sacramento is the main thing. And personally, I've been coping with getting ready for some very major teeth surgery and I can't eat anything solid right now. So I'm having to recast how I cook for myself and making things that are soup instead of sourdough bread with thick crust, you know. And it's going to take a little while, but the sweetest thing about it, aside from that, I now get to have ice cream as much as I want. Because I started losing weight really drastically. Some friends have offered to do a GoFundMe to raise the money that I'll need to, along with the insurance to pay for the that's just like really touches me. So that's been pretty caught up in that. I spent two weeks with half of my mouth all swollen from an infection. I healed it, but it was I'm surviving.
Nothing to report.
Okay, I attended two of the graduations down at Sequoia Schools. Again, Edward says it's the best part of this job. We had a SCUSBA meeting. Would you like to talk about it since Edward went and?
Yes, I totally forgot. Yeah, so I went to the SCUSBA meeting with with Sue and Sue kind of gave our report. But we got a really good, let me pull up my notes from it. A really good presentation about AI and utilizing it and how to, you know, navigate something that is so quickly evolving. Something that Santa Cruz City Schools has done a really good job at navigating with their tech support. What, do you know what they called them? Tech liaisons?
Well, it it was Kyle Kelly, who is a trustee of the Santa Cruz School District, and he was the one that questioned it. And that was probably less than a year and a half ago, and they really swung into action. So he gave a presentation basically from a board point of view, even though he's involved into up to his eyeballs in his regular work.
Yeah, it was.
I'm just hopeful, as I mentioned to Ferris, that the County Office of Education can help in help the districts with either space or opportunities to learn about it. I remember back in the Dark Ages with Scotts Valley, when the computers came out. And what they did was start doing parent nights them sitting in front of computers. And it was amazing. And that's kind of what I'm thinking is perhaps there can be something, because I think parents might be one of the harder more difficult to understand what it what it means. Whatever it is.
I I found my notes if if I can go through it. So yeah, we got a presentation primarily on ChatGPT. It was ChatGPT as a learning tool. He went in explaining what ChatGPT is, because I know a lot of us are really confused about what exactly it is. And so it's, you know, pre-trained, fine tuned by humans. And so the concerns that they had were about, you know, authenticity in, you know, writing assignments and and in school reports, biases in the training data itself that is reflected in what we get back when we get, you know, outputs from ChatGPT, academic integrity and the line at which, you know, academic integrity is is lost. And also privacy concerns about, you know, what are we inputting into the system and where exactly is it going? And who has access to the prompts that someone is putting into the, you know, ChatGPT? Who has access to that? So those were some of the concerns. But the potential is, you know, more personalized learning. I think they they they, there's a big scale that he went over of, you know, something that's completely written by ChatGPT, something just copy and paste it and submitted as an assignment. And something where you input your own essay that you've written into ChatGPT and used it as a personal assistant kind of thing, saying, you know, what are some edits I could make to this? And there was also, you know, bringing that up. It was also about how wealthy students or students who have the financial ability could hire a private tutor, you know, this whole time. And that has always been in place. And so is it also leveling the playing field in that it can be utilized to provide coaching and assistance of writing and improvement in that way? So that's another perspective of looking at it. It's also a brainstorm. If, you know, if you just said, you know, this is, these are, you know, I have to write an essay about this topic, what are some brainstorms of prompts or ideas that I can use? Is that academic disent, you know, is that not academic integrity? If you write the entire essay yourself, but you're brainstorming ideas with ChatGPT? So there are a lot of, you know, it's a big spectrum and it's not just black or white. And also that, you know, ChatGPT is interdisciplinary, so it has access to, you know, a lot of different, you know, sources that it pulled from. So you can get a more, you know, nuanced response from it. And so then their recommendation that I think Santa Cruz City Schools went with was don't ban ChatGPT. There is no way to completely ban it. And, you know, the systems that are currently in place to try to catch it aren't effective. But rather teach responsible use and teaching people, you know, about academic integrity and where that kind of line can get a little muddy. And knowing the student's voice is actually the best way to detect AI. And if something is abnormal from what the student usually does, you know, that it's taking more like a personalized approach. And I've also heard from folks who are autistic or have other, you know, like learning disabilities or just disabilities in general, where ChatGPT can, you know, you know, erroneously mark their tests or their writing as ChatGPT or AI generated. So that's also another, you know, perspective to keep in mind. And it's also really good for, it can be really good for educators, especially like like Canva has AI tools to help create presentations a lot faster. And, you know, it can, it's it creates a whole template. I actually use this for my own work. And it, you can change all of the, you know, the fine details of it. But creating a presentation in five seconds based off of what you input into it can save educators eighty percent of the time that they would put into something. Very complex, very nuanced. It was an amazing presentation. I, it gave us a lot of insight, I believe.
And he he said, get involved. Yourself, you know, make yourself familiar with it, work with it, try it. That's.
I spend a few hours every day deep in computer code, and I'm using ChatGPT, one of the versions, to do code review and to help me write tests. It's it's often faulty. But I use it as a way to, I can, it'll give me some code and I can use it off almost right away, see the problem. But then I know what the solution is because I can see the problem and I have the the framework that it offered. So sometimes I have to ask it the same question in different ways about five times. And eventually the code starts to be good and then I can work with it from there. But it's been especially helpful. A real key thing in in writing code is you have to write tests. Every function that you write, you've got to have some tests for it, you know, for good values and bad values, stuff like that. And I find ChatGPT is really, if I say, here is a routine I just wrote, what tests do I need? You know, and it's for the good values as well as for the weird exceptional values. How's it going to cope with that? So it gives me then the types of tests, and that's very helpful. But it's but it's not the final product.
So. Can I make an announcement? I did want to share with the board that we just received a an expulsion appeal from PVUSD. So we are required, if if we have to verify that the that the packet is completed correctly, however, if it is, we have thirty days to to have our, to be able to hear the appeal. Unfortunately, that will fall before our next board meeting. We're going to reach out to the appellant and the district and ask if they'd be willing to wait until March twenty first, which is when our next board meeting is. If they agree to that, then we'd be able to have it, you know, here during our normal time. If they don't, we would have to have all for a special board meeting just for the so we'll let you know what what occurs. And that could mean that we would have to have appeal meeting maybe the week before, March fourteenth, which would be some other date that the board would.
Would we have some training prior? Because we do have some board members that have not been involved in.
Yeah, that's a great idea. We could we could.
Yeah, because it's again, it's really looking at what is being presented. And it goes sometimes against your heart. That's not what we're trying to do. Just make sure that the district has done it correctly.
Should be a closed meeting, right?
That's correct. So our our student trustee would not be a part of that meeting.
It's it's the harder part of our job, being a appellant.
I guess we'll see. I can't say I'm looking forward to it, but we'll see.
So we, our next meetings will be regularly scheduled will be on March twenty first. Oh, that's, I'm sorry.
Leave it's March.
Yeah, I minutes in the back here. So March twenty first, four o'clock here unless notified. The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we had an expulsion.